All. All, thank you. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio and video recorded. We will not use a chat feature in this meeting. To ensure sound quality, default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute except when speaking or voting. This meeting is open to the public, but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. For member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or chair. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, we call our staff at eight six oh four 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 five eight one three after the meeting has ended. With that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thanks, thank you. So we're missing Tim Blee's deal tonight. I was gonna appoint Doris. Doris, you're here, right? Doris, are you here?
She's on mute.
Okay. I think you're on mute, Doris.
I'm here. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulties.
It's okay. So, uh, there it will be Victor, Tim Condorino, Karen Barnett, Doris Crump, and myself. And Bert will have you as an alternate tonight. Item number two, approval of the October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. We get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Tim made a motion to approve the minutes or second.
Uh, Karen seconds.
Seconded by Karen. All in favor of the October twenty-fourth, twenty-three meeting minutes? You can type of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it's been passed. Now, item number three, application receipt. Do we have any receipt of any new applications?
Yes, we do. Uh, you received it in your packet as well. There was a it's a single-family residential CAM application through twenty-four Nyanic River Road. Uh, we will be scheduling that um as appropriate on the next, next uh next availability.
Okay. Item number four is application review. I'm gonna move to number five first administrative review, so we can see if we can get an opinion on this other issue. Uh, review the proposed annual budget, proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Mark, you wanna take that?
Sure. Okay, um, in your package, you've received, this is a draft budget proposal for planning and zoning. Um, and uh, the the numbers that you're looking at are very similar to what we had approved last year. Uh, with a couple of differences, and I can point those out to you here. Um, the annual, under the service contracts and repairs line, uh, the annual GIS parcel mapping, uh, the previous budget, uh, put in a, uh, put in an amount of eighty-five hundred dollars. Uh, what I did is I went through all the invoices that we had uh, for that, for that item in last year's budget. Uh, and we are actually up to about ten thousand. So I went ahead and added that additional fifteen hundred dollars. So our annual budget or annual parcel mapping uh, line item uh, has been increased to ten thousand. Um, software remains the same cellular phones or plans or what they are that the town negotiates uh, and gets. Um, everything else, everything else being few dollars within. I mean, we're not really that far off from uh, last year's last year's proposal, um, and approved budget. Well, one item I'd like to point out is, is the last the last item on here, the office equipment line. Uh, we had been carrying over fourteen hundred dollars from year to year for a new laptop for the department. Uh, we never expended that money for a laptop. And now with the way that the uh, IT department is um uh, is running that department, they would purchase laptops uh, for departments as needed. So we uh, we took that line item out uh, and actually just uh, zeroed it down. So other than that, uh, if you have any other, if you have any questions on the budget, if you want to answer them.
Any questions on the budget? I don't see anybody. Okay, how about the, in your report?
Well, either way, we're gonna need a motion and a vote on each of these two items.
How about the annual report?
Okay. Um, the annual report uh, covers everything from fiscal year twenty-three, which is from June of, or July first, twenty-twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, this outlines all of our activities, uh, permits that have been issued and um, fees taken in for permit fees for the uh, for the planning and zoning department. Uh, outlines uh, what developments have occurred within that fiscal year um, and what permits have been issued for each of the different categories. Uh, also gives you a rundown as to the enforcement, uh, the numbers in terms of enforcement uh, actions and how many remain open from last year. What I did this year is I added a multi-family development section to here that we didn't have in previous annual reports, only, only because of, of the number of multi-family developments that have come in and that, that we've uh, reviewed and approved. So I wanted to call those out specifically uh, within, within the annual report. And again, if anybody has any questions on this, you want to answer them.
Any questions from anyone? The only question I had, Mark, is was it last year? Or, or not that we approved something, that probably, no, it was probably a couple of years ago, for the airport. But that they didn't move forward, but we approved something that wasn't this year. So what?
Yeah, no, no, we didn't approve. Well, we never got around to approving the airport. They ended up withdrawing that application uh, prior to approval, and that was, that was not within this fiscal year. That was prior to this one year, right?
Okay. Any other questions on the annual report? If there's no questions, can we get a motion to approve both of them separately?
So I'll make a motion to approve the annual report.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Is there a second to approve the annual report?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Tim, seconded by Victor to approve the annual report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I'm gonna pause the meeting for a second so I could talk to our attorney on this.
So it's the town attorney that forgot to and then they couldn't get him to dial in. And now Greg is gonna pause the meeting so he can talk to him on the phone. The rest of us are on hold.
Okay, can we, um, is there a way to put a link up? That works?
Yep, yeah, Katrina's gonna go do that right now.
So the process seems to uh, look very different than it has in the past in terms of the minutes and the agendas. Is this a town-wide issue on all the agendas that, because they used to work, but they used to look differently? Now they have a diff, there's a different system on there.
Uh, well, we have a new website. And uh, that was different than previously. We switched over and when was the switch over, do you remember? No, it was more, it was like January we switched. No, January is when I first got, yeah, January, February, and it right around the time when I first got here, we were doing the switch over. So it's been that way for about six months, eight months. Uh, but yeah, and I don't, you know, I looked at a previous agenda um, that had a PDF and the link worked, so the, something uh, something, just the one wire didn't connect on that particular one, but Katrina's putting one up now. And then I will monitor that from my phone. I appreciate everyone's patience.
Do we have any idea, John, with the how long will be? Can you?
Ryan's gonna go over and uh, check on the progress. He'll be right back. Maybe one in a few minutes. The amended agenda with the live link is up.
Okay, it does seem to be working, so.
Right.
All right, so now that we are back live, we just want to address what we did quickly as, on the advice of Attorney Keppl, who is our attorney. Uh, we called the meeting to order, and we approved the minutes of the last meeting, which was October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We noted a, we have receipt of an application for a CAM application on Nyanic River Road. Is that correct, Nyanic River Road?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And we reviewed and voted on the annual report and the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget with unanimous approvals for both. Uh, now we are at the item number four, which is PL dash twenty-three dash fourteen Town of Waterford applicant and owner for site plan approval for park improvements for property located one seventy-four and one eighty-four Boston Post Road and fifteen thirty-five and forty-nine Ferry Road C dash T zone in accordance with sections ten point two point five and twenty-two of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans entitled Waterford Civic Triangle, universal access and pond improvements action required by twelve twenty-eight, twenty-three. Want to address first, uh, why we're here tonight and how it relates to the application that was in front of us two weeks ago. Uh, two weeks ago, we had an eight twenty-four G review and approval. It was the incorrect process for what needed to be done. Uh, the commission evaluated it, determined that it had significant changes unacceptable to the commission at the time and uh, unanimously denied the uh, application that was before us. What really needed to be done was what is in front of us tonight for a site plan approval for the park improvements with respect to the pond and the surrounding part of it. Now, we got an app, we got plans in previously in our packet last week, and then we had a new um, plan dropped off to us uh, in the last day or two, which included uh, what is being acted on today, which is the site plan approval for um, the western half of the plans. Uh, well, if you're looking at the plan and the plan is oriented north, I don't know if it is, but um, the left side of the plan, which includes the park, a couple walkways, some handicap parking, et cetera. So it's not acting on the issues and concerns that the commission had from several weeks ago in terms of changing the plan. It's approving a site plan with the conceptual plans that are, that were in accordance with the conceptual plans that we approved uh, a couple of years ago. That's it. There's no um, softball field issues, there's no um uh, pickleball issues, there's no parking issues to the right half of the plan. We are strictly talking about a site plan for what was approved a couple of years ago and, and that's it. Um, so if we could uh, have a quick present, quick presentation by Mr. Frost in terms of the, the document that we received. in terms of the document that we received today and exactly what we're acting on, that would be great.
I'll make you co-host Chad.
Yep.
Okay. You're ready to go.
Let's see, it says that my, you need to enable me to be able to share my screen.
I'll just make you the host for now, just make sure you give it back. But I mean, that's why I made Greg though, I'm sorry.
Greg is the host, yeah.
Greg, you're gonna have to let me, can you make me host?
Me? I don't know how to do that, I'm not the host now.
Okay.
When I signed out, he said the host would let me in, I'm not the host.
I know, I accidentally just made you the host when I was, because the, on my screen, the names jump around. So when I clicked on Chad's name, it actually was your name. So if you could just click next to your name, it should, I don't know, are you on an iPad or you on a a computer?
On an iPad, it doesn't give me an option. Doesn't give me an option.
That's what I'm, we're trying to figure out how to do that. Oh, man.
Clicks on the participants, it shouldn't pull up.
Yeah. If you go to the bottom of your screen and if you can, if he says, you see where it says participants down the bottom of your screen?
The iPad, it might be on the top.
Yeah, or if it's a cross, let's see.
You hover around the bottom.
If you touch either the top or the bottom of your screen, it should, there should be a, there we go. Alright Chad. Thank you Greg.
Let me get to the right one. So the plan set should be coming up. Yes, alright, perfect. So I will try to make this quick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we did hear you a couple of weeks ago on the whole 824 thing, so as you mentioned at the beginning, this entire site plan set is, in our opinion, is in keeping with the original 824 that was approved back in December of 21. And everything shown in here meets that and all the things we talked about possibly changing have been removed from this plan set. I'll go through here quickly, if anybody has any questions and want to stop me as we go through, please feel free, or we can do questions at the end as well, so. I'm gonna jump through some sheets, hopefully. Site survey, I won't spend any time on, we have a couple of sheets of the survey, that was sheet number one, this is sheet number two, showing the parking area by the playground. All of our notes, I won't bother going through those at the moment, but we have plenty of notes to control the project on a couple of sheets. Demolition, or excuse me, this is erosion and sedimentation erosion control. And this is, most of the plan that was approved by the inland wetlands commission. The exceptions has been, and I'll zoom in a little bit, since we've added the walkway up here and the handicap parking by the library. We've added a little bit of ENS control over there, additionally some ENS control for some of the work getting over to the parking area up by the playground. The rest of it is a very intensive S and E plan because of all the dredging work, because of all the work in proximity to wetlands, we did do quite a robust plan and helped enforce it through our civil engineer as well as the town staff to make sure the contractor was abiding by everything we were hopeful for, to protect all the wetlands while we try to improve the wetland and water quality of the pond. Some of the details for ENS control. Now we get into the bulk of it, so I'll orientate you a little bit, we do have Rope Ferry Road along the bottom, the library over here on the west side of the site, the pond in the center. The playground is up here just off the edge of the page and then you can see just the edge of the softball field here as well, just to help orient you where you are on the site. From site demolition, fairly simple, pretty much just soil removal around the edge, we're putting in improvements. We do have some tree clearing that has happened over here in order for a universally accessible trail to go up the hill to the library. We have tree clearing that you had requested to go back into the project over here in that southeast corner that opens up the views from passerby's and from the high school into the park. And then the other thing I'll note as I zoom in here along the road. So I can hand the streetscape that you were requesting to go back in, we have put back in the project. There was a discussion about street trees and if some had been cut down yet or not, and I misspoke slightly when I said there hadn't been two weeks ago. There was a tree right here that is right in line with the crosswalk that was part of the project of the new crosswalk coming in at this location that was removed in that initial demolition. That we have existing street trees that run down here, those will all need to be demolished as part of the new streetscape. When we go to rebuild the wall, the wall needs to shift slightly from where it is. And even if it wasn't shifting, it, the reconstruction of that wall would damage the root zones of those trees significantly and we'd need to, they'd probably die within a couple of years anyways, so our recommendation is that we move the wall to the correct location, get it on town property and out of the state right away. Allow us to put in the proper street trees and street lighting where they are conducive and best fit for the project. But I just wanted to point out that the downside of that is there are some existing street trees there that do have to come down for that to go forward. The rest of the demolition is very straightforward for the most part, just to stripping of stockpile and stop soil in order to put in the ADA walkways. Moving into the site improvement plan, I'll start down here at the streetscape. We do have some details that we can show you this, but the streetscape consists of a new curb, so slightly new alignment of the edge of the road just to straighten out that curb, new granite curb, new concrete sidewalk, new street trees and new pedestrian street lighting all along the frontage. And then the stone wall gets reconstructed, as I mentioned, just a little bit further back from where it currently is so that we have this snow shell for a landscape buffer between the walk and the wall to create a nicer streetscape experience along all of the road. This is our ADA accessible route from the crosswalk as we come in, we do have stairs that go straight down and a ramp that goes around and comes down in. As we come into the park, we do have the universally accessible pathway that goes all the way around the pond. This is a concrete path along this whole side of the pond coming up, as well as a concrete path that goes up the hill to the library. Two ADA parking spaces at the library that will now be served, be able to get down the hill and to the pond. On the east side of the pond, we have a boardwalk that rings basically the entire eastern edge and we have an enlarged area of the boardwalk in the center with benches that we're calling the boardwalk overlook area, it's a basically an outdoor classroom sized to accommodate the typical elementary school class that could come out here and have some education. Other improvements to the pond, as you've seen, the pond has been dredged, we increased the depth of the pond, removed all the contaminant sediment out of the bottom, we've deepened the center to allow for better circulation and aeration. And we have installed some of these log features back into the pond, basking logs for the turtles that have now been rehomed back in the pond as it starts to fill back up. Additionally, we've added the trees and benches as was requested back along the northern edge of the walkway up here, we do have a four bay, new sediment four bay that has just been constructed over the last week. So that all the sediment, basically all the fill that this, all the water that fills the pond comes in through runoff. So we put in a new system up there to treat all that and keep as much sediment as possible out of the pond as we go forward. We then have a universally accessible concrete walk that continues up the hill. Winds our way through the trees to leave as many as we possibly can and there's some existing infrastructure there, we're trying to avoid between drains and fiber lines as well. This is the bathroom facility for the park. There is a walk here that we're replacing to fix some grade issues. And then we're extending the walk out to the parking area, threading between the playground, there's a playground with a rubber surface here and there's a little playscape here with wood chip surface. We're going between them to serve the ADA walk out to again to handicap spaces within the parking area. So that's the bulk of the project of what we're doing, I'll flip through the sheets. Zooming in a little bit, just to provide you some more detail, this is the ADA access at the crosswalk coming off the road as we do come in and I failed to mention. We are celebrating the Arnie Hall Memorial, which is this area right here. Currently, that block of stone was just sitting out in the middle of the lawn. So we're trying to, we've now built a plaza or proposed to build a plaza around it with stone walls, bench seating and give more prominence to that memorial as we go forward.
Chad, wasn't there a walkway supposed to be added to from the handicap parking to the gazebo?
There is, and I'll get, that's that last sheet and it's at the very end of our set because it was the last one that I turned in, so that's the last sheet that I'll get to, but yes, you are correct, we have added now a walkway that comes off of here, threads through these trees, gets to the gazebo and I'll definitely talk about that at the end of the set.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you were done, that's why I just wanted to make sure.
I'll try to be quick though, but I was gonna flip through some of the details really quickly, just so you have an idea. The boardwalk is, as we describe it as a boardwalk, we initially had designed it as a wood structure through value engineering, we're actually able to afford a cheaper alternative, which was a concrete structure. So these are precast planks of concrete with a stainless steel cable rail, the rail has a light in the top of the rail to light this during the night. We're pretty happy with that because it's gonna be, the longevity of that's gonna outlast the wood structure for sure. This is just a cross section of what that'll look like, this is the longitudinal section. This is the enlarged area at the crosswalk and shows the streetscape components, right, so the reset curb. You can see exact where the wall is currently is here, that's where the street lighting and nude street trees need to go, we push the wall back to this location. And then in this location is where we have the ramps and steps come down, so you can see the existing grade behind kind of proposed and dark. Likewise, this is the memorial plaza where the Arnie Hall stone will be with a seating area in the middle. And this is another section through the streetscape, just showing the existing and proposed conditions. And the additional space that we need to get all those components in. This is a photograph, just for reference, this was not included, but I've added a couple pictures in here for your reference of what the boardwalk walk will look similar to. We have a slightly different railing because we have a thicker cap with a light underneath of it, but that's an idea of what it looks like most of the time. Continuing forward. Site grading was a big challenge, as you all know, the pond is down low, we have a hill surrounding all the way around, the goal is to get a universally accessible trail, we were able to do that without needing handicap ramps throughout the entire site. The only handicap ramp necessary was actually, as I've already mentioned, from the street to come down to this grade as we come off that hill. Everywhere else, we were able to, I think fairly elegantly sweep the walks around and work with topography as much as possible so that we could remain under 5% everywhere we went without needing railings and landings. Again, just the enlargements of the grading for those two areas. Site lighting. We have picked a fixture which is in here, it's a comparable fixture that are both the pedestrian lights, so all these lights up here are pedestrian scale lights. They continue around the west side of the pond, up the hill to the parking area at the library. Similar light fixture all along the streetscape, it's slightly taller so that we get better photometrics along the streetscape. And then as I've mentioned in the railing, on the underside of the railing, we have an LED strip that lights down and lights the surface of the walking surface without having a lot of light in your eyes to be able to walk, light that side of the walking surface, so. Very good light coverage and I'll mention that we did include the lights all the way up to that parking space so that we do have very good light coverage throughout the night. Signage, I won't get into this, but all the required DOT signs along the road, the streetscape as well as the ADA signage at the parking areas. Site planting. A lot of wetland revegetation work to happen along the existing wetland and within the pond itself. The trees that were talked about last meeting, we have added back in and I'll go to the next image, so I've put again some of the trees that we're using, just a simple graphic. But up here, these ornamental trees are flowering dogwoods that look similar to this. The flowering trees working up the hill to the library, as I'm gonna blank on the name. Is the Hawthorne, excuse me, yep, and that's in, does flower nicely and somewhat matches the dogwood during the spring. Ace Rubrum, the red maples, we have three of those along the streetscape, those first three trees. The next three trees are the elm, so this is the hybrid elm that can withstand the blight. A great new tree to be using. And then we have white oak down here at the end, again, another representative, but all large street trees that we think are very appropriate for that to provide shading for the surface and provide a nice colonnade down the side of the road behind, or along the stone wall. A lot of the details, I won't go into these, these are mostly pavement details. Some more pavement details, the next slide is, I've added a picture of the wall, so this is the representational image of what we hope the wall will look like when we're done from our side of the road, so it'll be 30 inches tall on the roadside and varying height on the inside due to grade. But we're looking for more of a strip stone, we're using the existing stone that's on site in that wall to build the base and then we'll be adding new stone above. Some other details, trash cans have been provided, both trash and recycling in several locations. The bench location and the ADA access that we looked at for that within the outdoor classroom area, some potential signage, the library is looking to be able to do some library book walks, so we've provided the signage for that. And then the details of how this railing gets built as well. Other amenities, the bench, we have both the backed bench and the backless bench from the same family. And then the built-in bench, that's a wood bench that goes on top of the stone wall, is built to match. We have some stainless steel railings for the ADA access portion. Lighting wise, as I mentioned, these are the lights that we've picked. Again, same family of fixture, it's a full universal or full cutoff fixture LED. You know, and we just have the shorter one that happens within the park and a taller one that happens along the streetscape and that's merely for the photometrics. This is an enlargement of the rail cap with the LED strip up in the inside of it, just so you're aware, but as you can see, 100% of light comes downward from that. Details here, I'll just have mentioned again, as I said, that the basking logs are installed and working, it's great to see the turtles already out there on it. And then the walk, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, this was a recent or a very late add or request to put this back into the project. So this is the very northern edge of the pond, the boardwalk as it comes over, as the pathway comes up the hill connects to the walk that goes from the playground to the restroom. We've added this universally accessible pathway that comes across and meets up with a gazebo, goes past the gazebo. And over here, you can see we have the three memorial trees and a memorial bench and we've terminated the walk there just as we did in the approved 824 plan to be able to get people to that area. And I will note, from a grading perspective, we've also filled this area. The grade of the playscape and the grade of the gazebo finished surface are almost equal. But there's a big slope or a valley in between them, so right now, if we were just to put in a concrete walk that grade, we'd still have four steps to get up into the gazebo. So we, by filling this, we can now bring the concrete walk in and be flush with the gazebo so that will be fully accessible for anybody walking through to be able to come right up and walk right in without having any steps into the gazebo. It does require a little bit of fill, but not a tremendous amount to make that happen. And with that, that's the final, final plan, so happy to take any questions. And I'll go back to the improvement plan in case there are some.
Okay, can we put that down for a second so we can see everyone?
Yep, I'll stop sharing.
Thank you, Chad, that was well done. Any questions for Mr. Frost?
This is Karen, I just have one comment.
This is Karen, I just have one comment. Um.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's really a small thing, but on your drawing L dash twelve dot four. In the center, um. Center of the page, you have fl- uh, flange mount and um, boardwalk is misspelled.
Alright, thank you, we can take care of that.
Well, you know, I read the whole thing.
You did very good, you did, yes, yes.
Other, otherwise, uh, I really like this new path to the gazebo. I think that's gonna be really helpful for people.
I agree.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments?
This is Doris, um, I'm really appreciating the thought that was put out for, um. Accessibility towards the gazebo, so I, I, I applaud that.
Thank you, Doris. Anyone else? For, for Karen and Doris, I just wanna let you know, we, I met with John last week and saw the plan, and I said, you know what? There's no accessibility to the gazebo. We're putting in handicap parking, but we don't have access. To take. A wheelchair to the gazebo. So that's why we have the extra late sheet, is because we didn't have time to reprint all of the sheets. And we were gonna make it a condition, but I, I would, I wanted a sheet to show it so we could reference sheet number, whatever it is. As a condition of the approval, so um. It, it's, it's very important that we have that access.
Alright, maybe we should name it the Greg Masada Walkway.
No, 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 I just wanna say like, we, we caught that and said, you know, we need to make sure that that gets done. That's why, that's why the sheet is extra and shows that, so. Um, any other questions for Chad?
But it's, it's like a.
Okay, uh, John or Mark, do you have anything?
I, well, I don't, I don't have anything to add, um, you have. Excuse me, you have a staff report in your, in your packet. Um, that I had, I had provided for you all. Um. To, to Greg's point on adding a condition relative to that sheet, um. Currently, you have two conditions on the staff report. Uh, the first one, uh, the first condition identifies that, that all the work within the limits. Of work that's shown on the plan is what's being approved. Uh, or was being reviewed and potentially approved tonight. Uh, for the site plan, uh, however, I think, uh. Again, to Greg's point, adding a, adding a second condition. Uh, to this, that specifically calls out. Uh, sheet, and it's sheet, oh, it's sheet L dash thirteen. Uh, point zero, uh, to be added to the final. Well, which is titled gazebo walkway improvements shall be added to the final plan set prior to filing on the land records. Uh, so that can be an additional condition. To the staff report. Uh, and then, and then the third, a third condition will be the standard that, uh, since this. Site plan has already received conservation commission approval. Uh, that, that all conditions of, of inland wetlands permit C twenty-two dash ten. Uh, shall be incorporated into this decision. As well as it fully set forth herein. So with those three conditions, uh, you can discuss.
Okay, um, if there was no other questions for, is there any questions of Mark or John? Okay, if there's no other questions, can we get a motion to approve, and then we can have any discussion that needs to be had?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, um. The motion to approve would be PL dash twenty-three dash fourteen with the three conditions.
That's correct. One, two, and the third that we just referenced, L thirteen. Uh, and also findings one through six of the staff report.
Great, thank you, Tim. For a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion made by Tim, seconded by Doris. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve PL dash four, uh, PL, I'm sorry, PL dash twenty-three dash fourteen? Okay, well, we just called for a vote. Uh, all in favor of approving PL dash twenty-three dash fourteen, signify by saying aye. With, that, as, um, I'm sorry, with the conditions and the findings as proposed by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Karen?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's a unanimous five no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the quick work this week in, in uh. Getting everything done since the last meeting, appreciate that.
Happy to do it.
Next on the agenda is any correspondence, I don't have any.
No, there was none.
No, okay, any commission business, uh, any past projects, upcoming projects?
The upcoming project would be the informal that we're gonna do, right? I just had that, um, that project that we had received for, um. Uh, for Nyonic River Road, stack cam.
Okay, and uh, the hotel?
Yes.
Are they coming in?
They are, they're coming in, they're, uh, for the next meeting, uh, as a application, you know. Pre-application presentation.
Inform.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Okay, anybody else have any questions on any commission business for John or Mark? Okay, great, sorry for the delay this evening, but I think we wanted to make sure that we got it right, so that there was no issue with any approvals that we made. Um. So I think it was worth the delay. Have, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and I think we'll see each other at the next meeting.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Night, good night.